We're going to begin the meeting in a minute. There we are. I want to call the meeting to order. We're ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with due due justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Certainly. Chairman Davenport?
Present.
Vice Chairman Goins?
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Keys excused.
Commissioner Steinman?
Present.
Commissioner Trobridge?
Present.
Commissioner Dunham?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to answer them. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We would appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Do we have a motion for the approval of the August 23rd minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval of August 23rd, but I wanted to abstain as I was not present at that meeting.
Mr. Vice Chair, then someone else will need to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes of the August 23rd Planning Commission.
We have a motion for approval of the 23rd minutes. Please vote. Post. And that motion carries. Let's move on to the housekeeping items. Staff?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, item 11, ANX 23103, the applicant's requesting abeyance until October 11th so that they can work with surrounding property owners. Item 16, SDR 23883, applicant is requesting this item be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 19, GPA 22286, applicant is requesting this item be withdrawn without prejudice. Items 20, 21, 22, and 23, it's GPA 22587, ZON 23373, VAR 23661, and SDR 23377, applicant is requesting these items be tabled. Items 24, 25, 26, and 27, that's VAR 23108, VAR 23109, SUP 23111, and SDR 23107, the applicant has turned in revised plans and is requesting that the items be held in abeyance until October 11th in order to give staff time to review them. Item 28 and 29, VAR 23547, and SDR 23545, applicant's requesting abeyance until the October 11th Planning Commission meeting. Item 33, VAR 23674, staff is requesting this item be stricken from the agenda. And items 35 and 36, it's VAR 23598, and SUP 23596, applicant's requesting these items be held in abeyance until October 11th.
Thank you. Is there any items that the commission would like to pull forward? Seeing none? Is there a motion for the housekeeping items?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve all the abeyance and withdrawal items as read in by the record.
Mr. Chair, on the public hearing items, just to open up the public hearing, just in case someone has an issue about those being withdrawn.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the items that we, that staff read in? Come on down. Which item?
Oh, number 33. Oh, okay. Sorry. Never mind. Sorry.
My name is Brenda Campbell for the record. I didn't quite understand what you were doing with number 33.
It's being stricken. In other words, it's gone. They've got to start all over if they want to do it.
Okay. And how about how it is related to item number 31, since it's the same person and same address?
That's still going.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Goins?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the housekeeping items.
If you have a motion for approval of housekeeping items, please vote. Post. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to move on to the consent agenda, six through 10. On the consent agenda is, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the department, and may be enacted in one motion. Does anyone wish to pull any of these items from the agenda?
I've got a question on number 18, so I'd like to have that pulled, please.
We're only on six through 10.
My mistake.
Okay.
When we get to 18?
Okay.
When we get there?
Too much coffee today, huh? Okay. Seeing no one, I will ask if there is a motion for the consent agenda? Well, we'll open it, well, I did open it for public comments, okay.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda items, the items six through 10.
We have a motion for approval of six through 10. Please vote.
And that's subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Post. And that motion carries.
Items six and seven are final action, and items eight, nine, 10 will go forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Now we're moving on to one motion, one vote. The following items are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission and not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number 11, ANX 23103. But I like number 11. Okay. We'll come back, you promise? Okay. Item number 12, MSP 23921, applicant Hiunga King, owner Watkins Investment LP for an existing swap meet at 4821 West Grape Road. Item 13, RQR 23936, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor Owner Rancho Station LLC, required five-year review on an approved special use permit U-036-87 for a 40-foot high, 14-by-48-foot off-premises advertising billboard sign at 1999 North Rancho Drive. Item 14, SUP 23886, applicant Nevada Power, owner United States of America, for a proposed electrical utility substation approximately 370 feet east of the corner of Hualapai Way and Darling Road. SDR 22509 for a proposed electric utility substation. Number 16 is withdrawn. Number 17, SDR 23906, applicant owner 501 South Third LLC for a proposed 10,241-square-foot three-story office development and parking garage at 521 Third Street South, excuse me, 521 South Third Street. And number 18? You won't let me do 11. You won't let me do 18. Okay. I'm going to open all of those up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
I want to pull some. I want to pull 12, 13, and 14.
And you made me read them.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
12, 13. You didn't give me time to tell.
What about 15?
No, go ahead.
No, 14 and 15 are together. Okay.
Sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
Pull it off.
Is there, yeah, is there anyone with comments on 17? Seeing, you want, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion on number 7.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Lonely Item 17, SDR 23906, on the one motion, one vote portioned agenda, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. Post. No. Oh, revote? I forgot how I voted. Revote. Mr. Dunham? And the motion carries.
And that goes forward to council on November 7.
Thank you. Okay. I'll move back to item number 12. Do I, Mr. Scott, do I need to read it again?
No, Chairman, you don't need to read it.
Okay, thank you. Staff?
The signed plan complies with the city zoning code, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Did you wish to make comments before I asked the commissioner, or do you want to find out what he wants?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the commission. My name is Andrew Kang. I reside at 2704 Prospectum Mine Avenue. We have requested our master sign plan once before, about two months ago, as you might recall, and at that time, the commission has denied the request despite of staff recommendation for approval, indicating that the word "swap meet" in the sign plan is not appropriate for their location, as our business does not sell any used items, and the entire shopping center has quite a professionally clean look. And at that time, Mr. Chairman and some other members of the commission were so gracious enough to give us suggestions to replace perhaps the word "swap meet" to "discomble." So at this time, we, what we did was, we eliminated the word "swap meet," and we replaced it with the "discomble" to comply with the opinion of the commission. So we really hope at this time, the commission will give us approval so that we can go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Steinman?
It appears that you have already put up the sign before it's approved.
Yeah, actually.
And then you have two signs that still say "swap meet." Now, what are you going to do?
Now, the, yes, I'm sorry about that, but I explained to the Planning Department staff about six months ago that we misunderstood the special use permit item 16, and even staff members didn't quite understand what that means. So that was put up there by our misunderstanding about six months ago. So now, the, actually, it is scheduled to take it down on Monday morning, the swap meet, the sign, that is next two weeks. So that's all I can say to you, Commissioner Steinman.
Did the big sign in the middle have the word "swap meet" on it also?
No, sir.
Never did?
No, no. It's a "discomble." "Discomble."
Okay.
Actually, I do have a, I don't know.
No, that's all right. We have it. We have it. I was out there.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I just, I just wondered when you were going to take it down. I thought, I'm fine. You explained it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing no one, I'll ask the commission if they have a motion.
I'll make a motion on agenda item number 12, MSP 23921, move for approval, subject to conditions.
And just for my clarification, there will no longer be the word "swap meet" anywhere for the record.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Now go forward to City Council on November 7.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Do we go to a City Council meeting?
Yes, sir.
For this?
Please. November 7.
November 7, okay, thank you.
Item 13. I've already read that into the record. Is the applicant here? Clear Channel, please come down. Staff?
This is the fourth review of the subject billboard. Staff finds that this billboard is appropriate at this location and is recommending approval.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lucas Tucker, 200 South 4th Street, here on behalf of Clear Channel.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Steinman his questions.
I just want to know if there's any attempt to put up deterrence for the hundreds of pigeons that seem to be living in there, and that, that crossbar up above, and somebody attempted to paint up eight feet, that doesn't do it. They're not, they didn't clean it up very well. It's still a mess.
Well, our client is, we talked today, and they are agreeable to the conditions about the bird deterrents, and certainly as far as cleaning up the bird droppings, I mean, that's not good for our client either if someone drives by and sees all that stuff, you know, so.
The crossbar underneath is really a mess also, so they can do all that, they'll be fine with me, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on RQR 23936, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval of item 13. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
That goes forward to council November 7.
Thank you. Number, item 14 is the owner of the United States of America. Is that us? Is the applicant? Oh, okay. Staff?
This application complies with city standards. We note that the nearest residence is approximately 1,000 feet away from the site, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Scott Rudy, on behalf of Nevada Power, we are proposing a electrical substation on five acres. This was the site design review and special use permit that I said that would come before you because the, we recently changed the general plan to allow this substation. We're in agreement with all of staff's conditions and would ask for your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on 14 or 15, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll, was there somebody behind you? No. I'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Steinman.
It's a question about, does this property actually protrude into the right-of-way of 215 as it appears on our map?
I believe it does not. I believe that there is some sort of grant for the right-of-way at that location on the north of the property.
Because I assume the road's all there, but it shows your property out in the 215, and I can't believe that's correct.
And that five acres, Nevada Power does not have a grant on. It's still under control of the BLM. Nevada Power only has a grant for the south 10 acres.
If I may so. Yes. The ownership of that parcel is such as you see it, that it is owned as a single parcel, but as the applicant indicated, their lease is only on a portion of it. But as far as the identification of the parcel, this is accurately displayed.
That is displayed correctly.
Yes. It is just their lease is on only a portion.
The other question I have is that in page three of our staff report, it says that planning commission shall consider the environmental impact assessment. Where's that?
Is that page three of the site point of view or the use permit?
Where is it? Under the use permit, what page? Page three? Yeah, I see it on page three. Oh. Oh, I thought they said that's where it is.
I'm attempting to help.
Okay.
The environmental impact statement is contained within the planning file. In regards to state law, NRS requires any special use permit located within 500 feet of an unincorporated portion of the county that an environmental impact assessment, questionnaire, be circulated to other departments where we receive comment back from them. As of this date, we have not received any comments back from the other agencies.
Well, this is a very technical point, but when it says that we will consider that, I don't, I'm not sure it should say that when we don't have it. That's what bothers me here, because it says, when we go for approval here, which this is justified, obviously, we are stating that we have considered the environmental impact assessment, and I'm just pointing that out, that from a standpoint of technicality, we're not looking.
You're absolutely correct, Commissioner, and we will take steps to correct that.
Thank you very much. And I'll make a motion if you wish.
Yes.
SUP 23886, move for approval, subject to conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item 14. Please vote. And post. Motion carries.
And SDR 22509, move for approval, subject to conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item 15. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to City Council on November 7.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Where are you building in Nevada? I heard there's a new Nevada power building.
That I'm unaware of. I'm their land use consultant, so.
Lady's land.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to number 18. I don't believe I read that one in. SDR 23949, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner, United States of America, for a proposed 10,738-square-foot fire station with waivers of Town Center streetscape standards adjacent to the east side of Fort Apache Road, approximately 292 feet north of Fort Apache Road and Elkhorn Road. Is the applicant here? Staff?
This proposal is appropriately located in the Town Center Public Facility land use designation. In regards to the parking, we would note that since it is designated public facility, the applicant provides parking based on what he believes to be his need, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Sam Tolman, Architectural Services, City of Las Vegas. I'm the architect of record and the project manager on the project.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask Mr. Commissioner Dunham.
Mr. Tolman, I looked in our backup, and it said that there were 35 parking spaces normally required for a facility this size. You know that you're providing 25, and I just want some clarification on that.
Sure. As stated by staff, and this is only, the SDR establishes what the parking is. In this particular case, this is a fire station with a maximum staffing of 10, so we went with 27 stalls.
Okay.
Move for approval on item 18.
Okay.
We have a motion for approval of item 18. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal, and I commend Mr. Tolman for an answer so brief that it interrupted.
Actually, she's, that you satisfied Mr. Dunham that quickly, is what she needs.
And Commissioner, just for the record, within 10 days, Margaret.
Within 10 days of?
We're going to, we're going to change from the agenda a little bit right now, and we're going to pull up item, we've had a special request to pull up item 37, so we'll go to 37, S, or VAR 23601, applicant owner Becker &amp; Sons LLC, to allow a directory sign face area, a 48-square-foot, or 24-square-foot is allowed, and a height of nine feet where six feet is allowed, at 3065 North Rancho Circle. Staff?
The sign will provide enhanced legibility for motorists entering the business park because the variance will not adversely impact adjacent property. Staff recommends approval.
And I'll correct it to say North Rancho Drive, not Circle. And I will advise that Mr. Becker is a neighbor of mine, and I have not discussed this with him, and it wouldn't change my decision. Mr. Becker?
My name is Barry Becker. My address is 50 South Jones, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here to answer any questions and hope that you'll follow staff recommendation.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask commission if there's a motion or question.
Mr. Chairman, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of VAR 23601, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval of 37. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the city clerk within 10 days.
And now we're going to go to 39. RQR 23916, applicant Lamar Advertising, owner, General Mills Restaurants, Inc., required two-year review of an approved special use permit U-0185-89, which allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 1361 South Decatur Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the use of this sign at this location to be appropriate and is recommending approval.
Thank you. Do you agree with all the conditions and the recommendation?
Yes.
For the record, name and address?
Scott Nafford with Lamar Advertising.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission if they have a motion or questions.
Motion?
RQR 23916, agenda item 39, move for approval, subject to condition.
And again, I'll make the same disclosure that Mr. Becker is my neighbor, and we have a motion for approval. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
That goes forward to City Council on November 7.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
You may just want to expand on that, that you haven't spoken with him regarding the item, and it's the same, same.
Same as before. I haven't spoken to him, and it would not change my decision on this item. Now we're going to go back to item... 30. Boy, he didn't get much ahead, did he? Abeyance, SDR 23323, applicant, the CW Group, owner, Toros Urantin, I apologize, for a proposed 29,851-square-foot commercial building, and a waiver of perimeter landscaping buffer standards to allow a 10-foot buffer on the west property line where 15-foot is required at 4,600 North Rancho Drive. Staff?
The applicant has requested a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer along Rancho Drive where city standards require a 15-foot-wide buffer. The inability to comply with landscape requirements indicate that the applicant is proposing to overbuild the site, and staff recommends denial of this request.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? The applicant's not here.
You may want to obey this item.
Mr. Chairman, because of the fact that the agenda's moved along, if we could trail this, maybe give the applicant time.
Okay. Then we'll trail this item to the last, so that is item number 30, in case the applicant shows up. That's not, you're not, you're not the applicant? No, okay. Then we, we will move on to item number 31, ZON 23672, applicant owner, Gladys Flores, from R1 Single Family Residence to PR Professional Office and Parking at 1650 Southeastern Avenue. VAR 23673, to allow two parking spaces where six spaces are required for a proposed professional office conversation, conversion. I've had a long week. I want to get a conversation about this conversion. SDR 23671, for the conversion of a two-story, 1,660-square-foot residence to professional office with a waiver to allow no landscaping buffer along a 22-foot portion of the front property line, and to allow a 14-foot-wide landscape buffer along a 65-foot portion of the west property line where a 15-foot-wide buffer is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, due to the parking variance, which staff finds to be a self-imposed hardship, staff is recommending denial of the zone change, the variance, and the site development review.
Thank you. Oh, you're not the applicant?
No. Oscar O'Keefe, architect, 3782 Falcon Springs Drive. As, as you note, that based on the hardship of the site, we just cannot simply meet the parking spaces required. This is one of the few remaining houses on Eastern that are, have yet to be converted to offices, so we hope that we can grant this, this variance in parking and setbacks, please.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Yes, I object.
Would you give your name and address?
10 De Vries. I live, I live around 1,400 Eastern, and I'm, I come because, I don't know if you guys know what's going on over there. A lot of those houses have been converted, and they convert them to offices, and then they rent out even the closet space as another office. Next thing, there's three or four businesses there. There's no place to park, so then they're parking in front of our houses. They leave their garbage in there. They're in the way of the sweeper. It turns into a mess, and, and to me, there are a lot of hideous colors on that street now, too. And, and I wanted to know if you guys are aware of what you're allowing to happen, and it doesn't seem like anybody polices it.
Okay. We're just taking the public comment, then we get the comment after that. So I have someone else that wishes to speak.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, and I completely concur with what that man just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and do, no comment?
No, no comment. No, no comment. I mean, the site, the site is what it is.
Okay. I guess I will disclose, I am not in the notice area. My office is at five forty East St. Louis, and I'm way up St. Louis, so I'm not anywhere near this. So I'm not affected, so I will vote. Is there any, Commissioner Dunham?
Yeah, I, I feel that the gentleman's pain on this because you're right, the colors are getting outlandish, the flags, the banners, the illegal signs. And one thing that you can do to help us is unfortunately, we're complaint-driven in that department, and so I will see that if you get with me, I'll get you a phone number for community response to go out there, and we can cite those businesses that are, that are operating illegally. I've noticed also that there's, what are supposed to be offices are now retail buildings, and yeah, I feel your pain on that, so just get with me after the meeting or maybe right after this.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the report that they made before this commission is then taken note of, and we take that back and follow through based upon their testimony this evening.
Perfect. But if you have one in the future, Commissioner Dunham's mind, all of our phone numbers are listed on the city website, so call us, and we'll make another phone call if you need that. Is there anyone else that wishes to? Commissioner Trewsdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. You know, this area is, is a difficult area, but what the applicant has before is, I agree with staff on this, that two parking spaces, one being handicap accessible, and the main access being on Howard. We're just begging for a parking problem along Howard with this. And it's unfortunate that you do sit on the corner. You've got a building in the middle of the lot, and you've got this back area, but no one's gonna be here proposing that you have cars back out onto Eastern as well.
Correct.
So this is one that may, I don't feel is a good conversion. It may be something that really needs to be reconfigured as a, as a, if you're gonna try doing this type of use. So I'm not gonna support the application.
Yeah, and some of these, we had one previously, I believe it was an accountant and an insurance. They went together, which gave them the parking spaces between the two buildings.
Correct, yes.
Which I think is what needs to be accomplished here.
Well, that, that's possibility is that the neighboring on the north side, which is still residential. At, at that point, if they do be, decide to become offices, then that, we could work out something between the two lots and create a centered parking.
Yeah, but I have to agree with Commissioner Trewsdale that with two parking spaces, this is gonna be nothing but, I mean, you gotta have somebody to unlock the door, so that takes up one already, and that all it leaves you is, is a handicap space. It's, it's just not gonna work with two spaces. Is there, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a motion for denial on item thirty-one. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Thirty-two.
Item thirty-two, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for, to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a.
And item thirty-four also.
Okay, we we have a motion for denial on item thirty-two and thirty-four. Thirty-three was.
Mr. Chairman, we'll have to take those separately.
We have a motion on item thirty-two for denial. I notice the votes, and that carries. Item thirty-four?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Motion for denial on thirty-four. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
In all matters, go forward to the City Council on November seventh.
Thank you. Item thirty-eight. Applicant, Richmond American Homes of Nevada, Inc., owner, City of Las Vegas, to allow existing non-standard streetlights for an approved seventy-block single-family residential development at the northwest corner of Cimarron Road and Deer Springs Way. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, originally, the applicant requested to use non-standard streetlights temporarily in order to receive final approvals on blocks in the subdivision. Subsequently, the applicant has requested that the non-standard Town Center streetlights be allowed. Staff finds that this is a self-imposed hardship and is recommending approve, denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Paulo Chavez, twenty-four ninety Pasel Parkway, Henderson, here on behalf of the applicant. I'd first like to start, state that it is correct what Mr. Anken said regarding how we move forward with this project. We weren't going to be putting in temporary streetlights to get our permitting process moving. What, what happened in the process was that inspections and the contractor that put in the bases of the streetlights did not put in the Town Center streetlight bases, which are a little bit bigger than the non-standard Town Center streetlights. So in order for us to go back to remove the streetlights, we would have to rip out all of the, the bases, and there's a lot of, I got some pictures to show that they got, there's a lot of bases in areas where we could affect driveways, neighbors, those streets are complete. So we felt that we could go forward with leaving these streetlights as is. It would benefit also not having as many complaints from the existing neighborhood. The other, one other reasoning to try to stick with the lights that are out there right now is the fact that it is in the border of Town Center, and the surrounding neighborhoods all have the typical non-Town Center streetlights. We did come talk to the inspections people, because we're trying to get this moving for our bond. They allowed for us to, at, at the beginning, they, they allowed us to just change out the, the streetlights on Cimarron. And that's how we moved forward. We moved forward with switching those streetlights out, and those have just been completed. I'm not sure if they've been energized, but I know they've been swapped out. Then inspections came back and said, no, we need the internal streetlights because at the time, they were the impression that the internal streets were private. If they were private streets, they could be left as is because they didn't have to follow the Town Center standards.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I live on a street that has exactly this type of, of streetlight. And the problem is, it, it might be all right if they could take the actual light itself, the end of the light, and make a shoebox out of it so it doesn't glare in somebody's window. But right now, if you're across the street from one of these settings, it'll drive you nuts, especially if they put those sodium things in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm James LaRose, eight zero three nine Aztec Basin Avenue in Cimarron, the housing development in question here. I'm also the, currently the only board member of the Homeowners Association. I have spoken to about half of the residents and have pretty good opinion throughout, although I don't have a documented or signed, that most folks are in favor of changing these streetlights out. Number one, for the main reason that the city wants them is they're a better-looking, more attractive streetlight, so we, we support that for that main reason. I've heard a couple, actually three or four different stories as to why we got to where we are today. What I understood in the beginning of the process is that it was an agreement to move along so they could start construction to put the temporary streetlights in. However, there was a mistake made by the contractor, and they mistakenly installed the wrong footings. So that, that's how we ended in this, in this predicament, so.
Okay.
My, my long-term outlook here is, is what I'm concerned with, and it's the property value. I mean, are we, are we not part of Town Center? Yes, we are. Whether we're on the border of it or in the middle of it, we, we adhere to these standards. Yes, there is a mix of streetlights in this area. It looks rather unique, actually. Deer Springs running between Cimarron and Buffalo, right next to the new YMCA. One side of the street has the Town Center streetlights, the other side of the street has the standard streetlights. I do believe this is something that through time, the city's going to address and make that area more conformal. However, without dragging on too long here, my opinion and the individuals that I spoke to throughout the community, approximately fifty percent of the homeowners, is we would like the streetlights changed. If you would like some form of petition or documentation, I can do that for you in a week or so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Name and address for the.
Ryan Hammond, six eight six eight Sky Point Drive. I am the solitary board member, homeowner voter, board member for the Sky Point condominiums just adjacent north of this development. I will concur with my neighbor in supporting the Town Center regulations and the standards that we've established to can complete a consistent look throughout the neighborhood. This is a developing area, and we want to maintain the same aesthetic-pleasing look throughout the, the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do you wish to respond?
Yeah, I'd like to respond. I did, we did send out notices to the, to have a neighborhood meeting for, to, for everybody that has any opinion to come out and express their concerns. I believe James was the only individual that showed up. No other neighbors in the neighborhood showed up. We also went around because we had to get applicants at first. In order for me to process this waiver, we had to go forward and get every applicant's signature. That was not the case, but we started that process, and we did speak to, I would say, half the individuals, probably more. A lot of those houses are, the individuals were renting so that we couldn't talk to the actual owner. Some people didn't want to comment one way or the other, and then we did have some individuals that did, would want, that wanted the regular streetlights or the Town Center streetlights. But we did conduct a neighborhood meeting to get everybody's opinion, and again, only James showed up and another lady that showed up that was not part of the community. Just wanted to let that put on record.
Thank you. Anyone on the Commission?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Chavez, you and I have had several conversations about this, and I'm just gonna reiterate some of our conversations. As I recall, when these bases got put in, I mean, these are significant concrete foundations, roughly three or four feet in diameter and five or six feet down. If I recall correctly, it's not just a matter of, of changing the streetlight. It's a matter of taking out that concrete that's below surface and replacing it and putting in a new bolt pattern, which means that there's going to be service possibly disrupted to all of your dry utilities, i.e. cable, telephone, those, and power.
That is correct.
Yeah, I, and, and I went out and looked at it, and I was of the opinion that the stuff, that the streetlights on Cimarron should be changed, and as I understand it, you have done that.
That is correct.
Those are the, those are the black standard streetlights. So I really don't have a problem with the silver standard streetlights on the interior of the subdivision. It would be a moot point if these were private streets because then it would be allowed that way. So it's because they're public, the new standards fall into place, but I don't see that the community's going to benefit by you tearing up those streetlight bases and possibly keeping those people from having power and cable, TV, and telephone, that it's worth that much effort at this point in time. So unless somebody else has some, some comments, I'm.
Is there a way we can kind of go halfway on this? How about changing out the heads so that they're consistent with the Town Center standards?
I believe an entire streetlight is, is a concrete-type streetlight as opposed to a steel streetlight. If it's just the top portion that you're, that you're asking for, I'm not aware that you can do that. I can try to check, but I think it's a complete, it's a complete streetlight. It's, it's, it's the way it's manufactured. I don't know if they can just check the light itself, or is that the portion you're talking about, this?
Just the head.
Which portion right here? I can, I can find out.
Or there is an aftermarket shroud that can go around the thing to, to address the bleed over, which is really quite a nuisance, but.
I have not, I have not seen that. I have not seen that, or I can follow up and find out if that's even possible, if that's an option.
Thank you.
Comments? I, I understand the, the issue of tearing these out, but I guess I want to go back to the aspect of you opted to put in temporary streetlights to accelerate your project and save money, right? And with, and, and part of doing the temporary, you, you, as a developer, buy all that risk if it's wrong, right?
Yeah, everything needs to be inspected as well, so if, if the agreement was with the city to put these in as temporary, but the bases were hap, were supposed to be constructed for the Town Center.
But what I'm getting, this isn't a city issue. This is a developer.
No, no, I understand.
This is strictly your developer and your mistake.
As far as moving forward to.
No, as far as where, where you're at today.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I guess if we, whatever we do, if the homeowners feel they have some issue, it's with the developers, not with the city. That's why I'm, I'm just clarifying.
That is correct.
My problem is strictly under, from real estate, is I'm assuming that when you sold these individuals their homes, it said Town Center standards. You didn't get an exclusionary written into the contracts for their purchase that said, we're putting in these silver poles. You contracted to put in these upgraded poles.
Correct. I, well, no, that, that is not the case because our, our, we would have not sold, in our verbiage of our contract for the house, we wouldn't have said, we're gonna put in Town Center streetlights specifically.
Yes, you would have, because you would have said your tentative map, your final map.
Would be following the Town Center.
Yes, Town Center standards. So your contract with these individuals.
Oh, as far as the location, yes, yes, I see your question, yes.
But your contract for them to buy your homes says they're gonna get these streetlights, and unless they're willing to let you out of it, this, I don't believe the city should allow you to change this. You gotta work it out with them, and you're asking us to get in the middle and say, you don't have to do it. And, and I don't think that, I, I can't support it simply because you contracted to sell somebody a piece of project, a project and a piece of property. They contracted to buy it under these terms with those lights and this floor plan, and it would be like coming back in and saying, well, this gentleman bought the three-bedroom, but we accidentally only built the two, and so now he's stuck with it. I, I just, I don't believe it's a fair question to ask, and I think that your liability would go back on your guy that put in the poles.
That is correct.
So, I mean, I, I can't, it won't see my support simply because I don't think it's one item that the city should take up. It's simply a contractual item between you and your client that bought the houses.
Right, and at this point, we're also trying to save, like Mr. Dunham said, any type of disruptancy that's gonna happen between any type of electricity, cable, phone.
That would be something.
Issues that are gonna bring, that are gonna come up. I got some other poles that are very close to driveways where there's gonna be vehicles that are gonna be out of service, not, not the vehicles, but the driveway's gonna be out of service.
You contracted to give them these poles.
That, that is correct.
So the end of the story.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there, Mr. Trowbridge?
Yeah, just not to belabor the point, though, but I, I am very much inclined to agree with Commissioner Dunham's motivation. And there's an old saying about be careful what you ask for, you just might get it. I would hope that the members of the Homeowners Association understand that they're gonna suffer significant disruptions, a lot of construction ugliness, and it's gonna go on for months. But they're entitled to it, and if that's what they want, if that's what I'm gonna support.
I do have a timeframe as far as these streetlights. It takes approximately anywhere from three to four months into order to get. Then it'll take approximately two weeks per streetlight to put in. We would not put them all in at once because they gotta rip out everything. So that's just the timing of the, of the issue. Thank you.
We've already closed the public hearing, so that's, again, between you and them.
I just wanted to make sure that was stated.
I don't disagree. I know. We just had to order one for ours, and it took like six weeks to get the thing, so. Is there a motion? Commissioner Trewsdale?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a motion of denial on item thirty-eight. Please vote. Post. And that motion carries.
And that goes forward to City Council on November seventh.
And may I tell the gentleman who said he talked to all his neighbors that you might want to bring a petition to City Council with all those names and addresses? Might be good.
And/or all your neighbors. Thank you.
You better disclose in that petition of what they're really gonna get, which is a disruption of all the dry utility services in that area.
Thank you. Moving on to item number forty, S U P two three eight six four, applicant, owner, Rebecca and Dean Mallett, for a proposed childcare group home, seven to twelve children, and a waiver to allow a childcare facility on a street gator that, greater than sixty feet in width at five seven oh four Alta Drive. Is the applicant here? Okay, come on. Staff?
Staff finds that Alta Drive is an eighty-foot wide drive, right-of-way, and is not an appropriate location for a residential childcare facility, and recommends denial of this request.
Thank you. Applicant, name and address?
Rebecca Anne Malley, five seven oh four Alta Drive.
Okay, any, did you wish to make comment, or?
I'm already a licensed childcare there. All I want to do is be able to take the brothers and sisters of the children I already have.
So you're licensed for a smaller number?
Yes.
For six, okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask the Commission. Commissioner?
I'd like to make a comment that, first of all, in order to put the parking spaces that are needed, it means taking out the curb entirely in front of your house. that are needed, it means taking out the curb entirely in front of your house. That's what appears to me. The question is, does Public Works permit the curbing to be taken out so that up to four vehicles can enter and exit backing out onto Alta, which is a very busy thoroughfare? And in the evening at rush hour, you know, from Jones, it almost backs up to her house. And it's a very difficult situation. So I'd like to know what Public Works thinks about taking out curbs and sidewalks, I guess. Let, let them speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, caught me a little bit off guard, um, with this just being a special use permit. Um, I, I did not realize they were changing the parking configuration. Um, we do allow backing out when it is a single-family residence. I guess I would just ask, planning with a childcare and a special use permit, does it stay as like a single-family?
Yes, it does.
Residence? So with that being said, then we would allow backing out?
You, of four spaces, the entire front yard, that's okay? That's what they want to do. They're going to convert the entire front yard and this, obviously, the driveway they have now, and a very small space to the left of the driveway into four spaces. That doesn't seem logical to me that on that street, there's going to be four cars parked there and they're all going to be wanting to back out.
Actually, on the site plan I'm looking at, it shows that they actually do have 24 feet in width between the parking stalls so they can maneuver within that 24-foot area.
Well, the one I'm looking at shows the spaces one, two, and three next to each other, and number four is the handicap, which takes the most width. And that would be easy to maneuver in, but I just think Alta is a terribly, uh, traffic street.
We would concur. We would not want four parking stalls backing out. Um, I do apologize for this. I, the site plan that we looked at actually showed a different configuration than the one here. And I cannot tell from this drawing how much space is in that loading and unloading zone. Do you know?
That's not the correct one.
This isn't?
No, that's not the correct one.
Is this?
Yes, and there is 24 feet. That is set that up there.
I've never done this before.
That's all right. Do it from there. That'd be fine.
That's the site plan in my sample.
It's coming up. Go ahead. That's the site plan, which is different from what we see. Is there staff aware of that site plan?
I can't read the, Gina, do you have a, or applicant? I can't read the date on that plan that you're showing up there.
August 27th, 2007.
Okay, that is a later one.
Later one. We have.
I believe in, in the back room, did we have a different? I think we had a photo up of that with the colored laid in, which shows us the measurements that you had up just before the hand call.
There it is, 8/27.
There we go. Okay.
So we must have it.
Thank you.
8/27 is the latest site plan that was included. Unfortunately, it did not get into your backup.
Is that 24 feet between the spaces or 28?
It indicates 24 feet in between the parking spaces, which is the required amount for backing out.
So they could back out and turn and, and drive out on the street?
Correct.
Well, they could on spaces two and three, but one would be impossible.
One's incredible.
Yeah. The, the ages of the children, I mean, how many cars are you really?
One dro...
They're not driving yet.
They're not, they're two and three-year-olds.
I hope they're not driving yet.
And, uh, being so small, the most we have at dropping off at one time is two, and normally it's one. Never is it...
Can I ask you where you're going to park your car and that trailer that's sitting there?
The, well, the trailer's going to be gone, and my car's going to be the number one.
Number one.
Uh-huh.
So that leaves just two because most of the people coming don't have a handicap permit, I would guess?
Right, well, none of them have them.
That's right. But you have to have it, and that's a gone space technically.
Right.
Okay? There, there is a law that this cannot be on that width of street. And there's a reason, and I assume it's the, putting these children in danger on a high, highly-traveled street. And I think we have to be aware of that safety factor.
Right. A right in front of the yard that will be gone, but the drive-out is where the vehicles are at now, so there'll be a fence across there. So the children coming from the door to their vehicles, they're not going to be able to run out onto the street.
But, but the vehicle has to get in, and you have to have the fence open at all times when, when people are coming and going. I, I'm not as worried about that as I'm worried about just the, the, the problem of getting in and out of your site off that very busy street for those mothers or fathers who bring their children. That, that's why this law is there, and I don't think it should be abused in any way, especially for the safety of your children.
The parents that I'm going to have are the ones I already have. They just are having babies, and I can't turn the family's way just because they have another baby. But I want to abide by the law of not having over the amount.
But I, I question, in 1,700-square-foot house, how many children can you really have in a 1,700? You can have up to 12?
Yes.
In 1,700?
It's already been measured out. It's already, the city's already seen it.
Wow. Okay.
It's 35 square feet per child. And they're little. They're not school kids.
Well, I'm torn on this because I, I don't like the site for it, but on the other side, I do like that you wish to take care of these children. And I think that's an important issue in our community. There's no doubt about that. And I understand from reading, you're well-respected in the community, and that's important. So I am torn on this particular situation. But I feel just a touch better because of the way the parking has been changed from what we saw on this particular situation.
Mr. Chairman? I, I appreciate what you're wanting to do, and, but Alta's a street that carries the traffic at a good flow, people coming around to the west, coming around that corner. Uh, you know, and this sounds very terrible, but the fact that you have mothers with little babies coming and going at different times of the day, and whether, if everything works perfectly, one or somebody is still going to be backing out onto Alta. And there, I'm not going to, I, I can't support you. In fact, I won't vote here if I think somebody's going to back out in the middle of the street with a baby and, and something could happen. I just don't think that's, um, what we should be doing as far as a public safety issue.
Commissioner Trubridge?
I have to echo the same comments. I, I think that the strongest thing you've got going for you in this case is you have six children there currently and do an absolutely outstanding job. You have a tremendous letter of support from one of your neighbors. But having said that, if, if you were going to be opening an insurance company, I needed to get a special use permit for something like that, we would be really trying to ask you about what kind of landscaping you're going to have, what kind of exterior appearance would you have because of its impact on the rest of the neighborhood. But you're showing us you're going to have a concrete driveway. You know, if I was your next-door neighbor to the east, I believe it is, that has all the green, I would be very happy with you. I think that all that asphalt in the front of your home is going to be very unattractive. And that has nothing to do with how well you care for the children because obviously you do a fine job of that. It's just I think you're, you know, six is one size of a problem, 12 is another size of a problem. And I just don't think that that particular location, and we all know how fast they go up and down Alta. I don't know what the speed limit is, but I think I normally do 45. And, uh, did I just set myself up for a ticket? Okay. But, uh, I don't think I'm doing it by myself because I'm just staying with the flow of traffic and they have people backing out. It's just a, it's a safety hazard. And how bad would you feel if one of your parents backed out and got swatted by somebody in a big truck doing 45? You know, the pace was great.
Mr. Chairman? Just, just a comment though. But what happens, I, I think what she said is she has existing clients who are having kids. So if you've got a mom that comes there and drops off a four-year-old and now they have an infant, we're saying you can drop the four-year-old off at her house, but now you've got to go drop the infant off somewhere else. Um, I deal with this every day. I got a four-year-old, so, um, I don't see anybody else chiming in on that one, but...
I have two moms with babies.
Yep. But, but Director Wheeler, could we condition it so that...
You can't, you can't.
You can't limit it to say that as long as they are children of your existing customers?
I'll defer now.
Okay.
No, you can't. That's, um, akin to content of a sign. You're dictating the persons involved, and this is a land use decision only, so you would not be able to speak to the clientele.
Right. And just adding that, that would be almost impossible to enforce.
Yeah, well, trying to help her out.
Mr. Chairman, right now, the situation is actually safer, the way it's set up right now, because I assume your people have to park on the street, and there happens to be a bike way there also that makes it wider where they park, and they just pull up the curb and move out in the flow of traffic normally. It's probably a safer situation that way than filling up the front yard, would be my guess. I'd rather see that.
Will you let me do that?
Well, no, we're going to talk about it.
You can't count that as parking.
We don't know.
You can't, I don't believe you can count the public street as parking toward her requirement.
No, but I'm stating that's, uh, from a safety standpoint, that is a lot better than putting them in the front yard and having them maneuver out of there in their SUVs.
I, I think you've hit exactly what's going to happen no matter what you do with that parking system.
Yeah, they're going to park there anyway.
They're going to park there whether you have four spaces or no spaces.
You're right.
Um, I think you're exactly right. Anyone else? Commissioner Blunt?
I, the only thing I could offer is your neighbor to the east, uh, is it the Davies? Uh, spoke very highly of you. Maybe they want to join you in business and take six. That's all I can offer.
Is there a motion?
I was just... No. This is a public hearing, Chairman.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, well, I thought we already did that, but if we didn't, I'll open it for public comments.
Thank God, I thought you never asked. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. A similar question was asked of the DOE regarding Yakima Mountain and of the National Academy of Science on the same topic. How unsafe is unsafe enough? Now, that doesn't even compute in this forum or any other public forum. Fact is, the safety of children and grandchildren trumps all other considerations, particularly in cities' world. You see how people drive, how they park, how they run over their own children in driveways accidentally? There's no such thing as accident. There's negligence, arrogance, and a number of other things that I'll defer to, to some other forum rather than, uh, straight anybody's sensibilities. You have a duty, a sworn duty under the Supreme Law of the Land. In the interest of safety of children and grandchildren, deny the applicant's request. Very simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Trusdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a recommendation, or a motion for denial on item...
40.
40. Please cast your vote. And motion carries.
And that denial is final action and was appealed within 10 days to the city clerk's office. Thank you.
And I understand the applicant for item 30 is here? No? Here he is. Okay. There's a 10-minute penalty for that. Item 30, I'll read it in again. SDR 23323, applicant, the CW Group, owner Torres Uranson, for a proposed 29,851-square-foot commercial building and a waiver of perimeter landscaping buffer standards to allow a 10-foot buffer on the west property line where 15 feet is required at 4,600 North Rancho Drive. Staff?
The applicant has requested a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer along Rancho Drive where city standards require a 15-foot-wide buffer. The inability to comply with the landscape requirements indicate that the applicant is proposing to overbuild the site, and staff recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, thank you. Jim Childs, the CW Group, 5333 South Arville Street, number 104. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and, uh, just to give you a little history on this project here. Um, the site development review that we have before you tonight is the same plan that was, uh, initially approved on this about three years ago. Um, in this, in, in the interim, we've proceeded with preparing our architectural and civil plans to submit them. But during the timing on this, the, uh, the original SDR expired, and so we're before you again and asking for approval of the same plan that was approved once before.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. And they're coming down to the finish line. Mr. Philo?
Thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. On the monitor up above, we couldn't see the, the, the tree layout, so I'd like to just take a second here.
Would you like to speak, Mr. McGowan, while he's looking, or, or you don't have to?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I looked at the agenda, item, Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. It appears from the agenda text, the, uh, two acres is approximately 87,000 square feet, thereabouts.
4,3560.
Okay, that's close, close enough, we jazz. And this layout here, two-story building apparently, at 29,000, that puts in approximately one-third the total, uh, square footage that's available to the applicant. What in that case is the reason for the applicant's request for a 10-foot landscape buffer rather than a 15? Doesn't he have enough room? If he doesn't have enough room, perhaps you might consider approving the item. But if he does have enough room, in fact, more than enough, you might ask him why he's here in the first place. Deny the item without further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. This clarifies a lot. There's a transportation trail along there, and what I was concerned about, we just had that meeting at, uh, East Las Vegas Community Center, trying to find out ways of eliminating or mitigating the, the, the heat island effect. So we needed trees, you know, to, to keep it off the pavement and that. And I see that the applicant has that, and, uh, I think it looks fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Did you wish for any rebuttal, or?
Uh, no. Uh, again, I just want to reiterate, you know, this is, you know, we've already gone into design on this, and this is what is approved originally. Um, you know, there is, along that frontage on Rancho, in addition to the setback, there is a, a trail path that will be part of that, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Dunham?
Yeah, Mr. Childs and I spoke on this previously, and he held the item. And my only concern about this is that the throat depth was not sufficient enough and that you might need to apply for a waiver of parking. So I'm going to support this because I think something needs to go there, but I would like to add a condition.
Well, a condition has been added. I did meet with the traffic.
Okay. Can I, can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would, I would like to add a condition that you meet with the, the traffic engineer or traffic engineering department prior to submitting your civil plans, so that you guys can work out throat depth and width, so that you don't go through and do all of your civils and then have to revise them later. So, that would be my only caveat.
Okay, I, I, as I was saying, um, addressing directly that issue, um, the, uh, I did meet with the traffic engineer, and, and they have updated, they have put in there a condition specifically addressing the throat depth, which was reviewed in one of our previous reviews of the civil plans. Like I said, this has already been reviewed in the civil plan.
Okay, and I, but I'm not privy to your, your conversations with those people.
Okay, alright.
It was in my package-
It should be in that report. It should be in the package.
Is there a condition?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner Dunham. Um, yes, in condition number eighteen, we talked there about requiring the deviation from standard drawing two-two-two A. This applicant has previously submitted civil improvement plans that are in fact different than what is before you tonight, that does have an increased throat depth length, and we've cited that civil improvement plan number in condition number eighteen that they will have to conform to ultimately. However, I will note that they may have issues with the parking counts after this is done. I'm not sure. I noticed they only have one space over what was required.
And that, that was my concern, that you're gonna come up short on the parking.
Yeah, no, I've, I've, I have looked at that, and I think we can make it work, um, by just making some of it, um, making some of these compact, and we'll be able to make this work.
And I'll, I'll tell you right now, I'm notoriously mean on people that come in for parking variances.
I understand. I have no intention of coming back. I have no intention of coming back for parking.
I'm, I'm good on it. If somebody wants-
Is that a motion? I'd just like to ask a question. Has the fire and rescue looked at this from the standpoint, do you have to have a turnaround in the back there that's proper?
Yes, we do.
To get the rescue out of it. Let me, let, let, let her answer, please.
Fire did require a turnaround, however, I believe the applicant has met with them and worked something else out regarding a crash gate that goes to the east, and I would like the applicant to address that further.
Okay.
If I might. I have been in discussions with, um, our neighbor to the east, who is currently developing at the same time, and, um, and I've met with the fire marshal on this, and he is in, um, his representative is in concurrence with this, that we will have a crash gate in the back there, um, instead of putting a turnaround. That goes through the fire lane, connects directly to another fire lane on the other.
Can you point to where that's gonna be if we have the one-
It's gonna be right here.
Let's get the one up on the screen.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, right out there. Okay. Really? Okay. All right. You want it, Commissioner Dunham?
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, seeing none, I'll make a motion for approval of item thirty, um, SDR two-three-three-two-three, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions, and also with the, um, added condition as- They're all in there? Okay. All recommendations and conditions.
We have a motion for approval of item number thirty. Please vote. We'll actually get a two-vote for being late. Penalty. Post? That motion carries.
Thank you.
And that is final action, and the absence of an appeal is being sent to the city clerk's office.
I'm sorry, does this item go to the city council?
That is final action, and the absence of an appeal within ten days to the city clerk's office.
Moving on to forty-one, SUP two-three-nine-two-two, applicant, Calix Fine Dining, owner Park Two Sahara Pavilion North LLC, for a proposed supper club at forty-six, excuse me, forty-seven sixty West Sahara Avenue, Suite twenty-five. Staff?
The supper club and gaming use are appropriately located in-
One more. There's, I think there's an, another item on the same one.
Forty-one?
Number forty-two?
Yes. SUP two-three-nine-two-four, for general business-related gaming in conjunction with a proposed super supper club at forty-seven sixty West Sahara Avenue, Suite thirteen.
Supper club and gaming use are appropriately located in a commercial shopping center, and staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. My name is Regina Edwards, and, uh, I'm proposing a plan to, um, have gaming in, um, my supper club, and also, um, for a liquor license as well.
What kind of food?
Creole-style food.
I knew it.
Big crawfish, huh?
Yes.
I'll be there.
It's gonna be jazz music only, so.
Now, I might be biased towards you, but, okay. Um, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, jazz musician.
I was gonna say, I think she got you with the jazz.
I'm sorry now. I have a, a few relevant questions of the applicant through you, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Is there any relationship between this, uh, club and style of cooking with, uh, the city of New Orleans, Louisiana?
Yes, my grandmother is from New Orleans.
Your grandmother's from New Orleans?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, did you inherit her, uh, skills at cooking? For example, filet gumbo?
Yes, I did.
I see.
That's a surprise. You have to come to the grand opening to find out.
Well, if I'm invited, and I presume I'm maybe-
Of course you are. Everybody needs-
Complimentary, of course, I should say.
Anyone with a credit card is invited.
Credit card, yeah, that's, I have many credit cards. None of them recommend me. Second question, if you will permit it. Uh, gaming is known to be a, uh, diversion that places limitations on, uh, society's interactive conversation, and I would hope that this establishment, if, if it is utilizing gaming, would do so on a very limited basis. How many machines would be utilizing its premises?
I think in a supper club, um, Mr. Scott, isn't it five? A maximum of five.
Five, not fifteen. Oh, this is ridiculous.
She asked for eight, but the write-up says five.
But I think the code is five on a supper club.
Well, five, five would be infinitely preferable to, uh, eight or fifteen, at least to begin with. And if people don't talk, then you can think about five, or eight, or fifteen, or thirty, or a hundred, as, which, uh, what kind of a place it turns out to be. The final question, and this comes in the form of a statement. The city of Las Vegas has two sister cities, well-known to all members of the, uh, Department of Land Management and City of the Electoral officials. Those cities are Ansan, South Korea, and New Orleans, Louisiana, which was the basis for my proposal some time ago entitled NOLA, N-O-L-A, which means New Orleans, Louisiana. And the premise of that proposal was to ensure that, uh, persons of, uh, who came from, who were displaced by Katrina and, uh, uh, the other hurricanes down the Gulf Coast, were dislocated, should not be lost to the city of New Orleans, and should not be needed to return in their former status as, uh, less than skilled persons, uh, with professions, but should be entitled to return as skilled professionals in management and ownership and operation of their own businesses, either food, beverage, entertainment, and any other related businesses. And that can be done, it can, and will be done under the proposal, Project NOLA. This supper club may well be a very important part of that proposal, as also is the food, beverage, entertainment venue, known to some of you as Soul City. You may recall that, that's the purpose of it, is to give people a better quality of life, an opportunity, and dignity in their own time, not in the hereafter, but in the here and now. Uh, therefore, and subject to, uh, my approval of my audition at the place of, uh, subapprentices, and I'm sure that will take place in time. I strongly recommend approval of the item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Late night hour, huh?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Blount.
Will you be open to families?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Make sure you petition the area off, because it's a supper club, so you don't have kids wandering in the areas where they should not be.
Okay, I will.
Please. Thank you.
Was that a motion?
Uh, no other questions, I'll, uh, move for approval of item forty-two, SUP two-three-nine-two-four, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
How about forty-one? Forty- No, he said forty-two.
Well, let me regress that back to item forty-one, SUP two-three-nine-two-two, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
We have a recommendation for approval on forty-one. Please vote.
Thinking about crawfish.
Yeah.
Post? Motion carries.
Item forty-two, SUP two-three-nine-two-four, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, just as a matter of, just to clarify this, on the plan submitted by the application, so there's no confusion, it shows actually placement of eight machines, but I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get confused on the plan. We, it is a limit of five machines.
Condition number two, Chairman and Commissioner, says that a maximum of five gaming machines will be allowed.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and you accept that condition?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor of forty-two? Forty-two, please vote.
Okay.
Post? Motion carries.
And these items will go forward to city council on November seventh.
And now that is contingent upon you telling us. Everybody forgets us, and they tell the city council, but not us.
I'm gonna tell you guys, I promise.
Commissioner Blount will track you down if you don't let us know about the grand opening. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to number forty-three, and then we're gonna take a five-minute break for the, for number forty-four to be able to get prepared. Item forty-three, SDR two-three-nine-three-one, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, for a proposed public park and parking lot within the Boulder Avenue right-of-way between First Street and Main Street. Staff?
Uh, the proposed development is in keeping with the downtown Centennial Plan, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. And there's no applicant because it's the city?
Correct.
And this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. And give your name and address.
Edward Sokowski. I own, uh, the business at ten-twenty-one South Main Street, and, uh, I'm opposed to this. The, uh, I know it's a current, uh, uh, currently, everybody likes to close streets now, but this is, if, uh, you could, I can't see the street on this map, but, uh, I have, I've had my business there for thirty-five, over thirty-five years that business has been there. When this, when this happens, when this happens and you close that street off, my semi's coming down First Street, 'cause my building goes out to First Street. We'll have to either make a U-turn to get out of there, because you have Boulder, uh, closed off, which they currently use to get out of that, uh, out of the First Street area. If they go down to Casino Center, you can barely turn on Casino Center with a car, especially now that you've got, uh, uh, limited to two, two lanes. A semi cannot turn out onto, safely out onto Casino Center. So, a semi will either have to make a U-turn on First Street, or back up, pass Coolidge, to where the, um, Opportunity Village is, where you got a danger with, with the, with people there that work there that are not, are handicapped, and you got a semi backing up right where their building is. Then, on top of that, we have a big problem in this area with street people. Over the weekend, I had to clean off my, my window from, from graffiti that was sprayed on my window, 'cause I go to my business every day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, for the very reason because of the street people. Monday, I had to clean out human excrement off of my property, and this is just gonna exacerbate the whole problem with the street people. You're gonna have the same problem here that you got with Circle Park, and you're creating another problem that we don't need. Maybe a few years down the road, when this, when this area is better developed, it might be a good time to do it, but right now, it's gonna be nothing but a problem for me, for my business, and for the area in general. It, at the business right next door to mine, ten-twenty-five Main Street, at least two times a week, there's a, there's a street person sleeping out there when I go to work in the morning.
Okay.
There's street people sleeping all over, and this is just gonna exacerbate that problem.
Okay, thank you. Would point out that we do have a two-minute timer if we can-
Um, Dick Geier, uh, president of the Las Vegas Arts District Neighborhood Association. Uh, as Margot and some of you may already know, uh, this, uh, park, uh, on Boulder, is the precursor of a sculpture garden by Yakov Agam, uh, which will be very, very well-attended, uh, because of his international fame. We anticipate as many as a million people a year coming. It will, uh, totally change the neighborhood and, and, uh, make all the properties there more valuable, uh, all the businesses there that, uh, that depend on people coming into their building, uh, more profitable, and, uh, and it will, and it's gonna be a fenced-in, uh, area around the, uh, the statuary, and it will be, uh, under video surveillance in that area, and, uh, there's been negotiation with the property owners for quite some time, which now allows us to do this. It is a, an immense, uh, undertaking which will take several years to finish, and, uh, we, uh, are of course a hundred percent behind it and, uh, and really do need it to develop the Arts District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident of the Arts District in Ward Three, City of Las Vegas, and an artist, multimedia, for many, many years. In the interest of public disclosure, please, uh, respond to the following public pertinent questions on the public record of today's meeting. Who will benefit from the public park and parking lot? What, um, amenities are provided for families with minor children? How will those families with minor children get to and from the public park? What will be the, uh, hours and days of operation of the park and the parking lot? What security will be provided to ensure the safety of the children who use the park located in a high-crime area known for drugs, lies, theft, armed robbery, assault, graffiti, and homeless beggars? Who will pay the cost of, of construction and maintenance of the park and the parking lot? What's the separation distance between the park, the parking lot, and the nearest on-sale liquor-licensed, uh, business premises? Will the REI Neon LLC and/or the Las Vegas Visitor Commission Authority contribute any funding for the park and parking lot, if so, what amount? Will any of the Arts District property owners contribute funding for the park and parking lot, if so, what amount? Why is that parking lot needed when an ashfall type lot is located at the corner, northwest corner of Boulder Avenue at Casino Center Boulevard, and is owned by the owner of the arts factory, uh, Wes Isbit Miles, who's a close friend and business associate, recently spoke to you at this very forum, uh, claims he is the president of the Arts District Neighborhood Association, which to your closest understanding is not registered with the State Department of Corporations. And, uh, what is the current status of the, uh, Yakov Agam Art Sculpture Garden or Plaza, originally planned for development citing at that same public right-of-way, uh, between Main and First on Boulder, by the Arts District Development Corporation and the Arts District Tax Force?
Are there many more?
And what's the total cost?
Is there many more questions?
No, this is final one.
Because ninety percent of the questions you're asking are not within our jurisdiction. You're asking all these financials questions and stuff. We cannot do it.
You have a planning director right there who knows all about this.
This is land use, is the purpose of the planning commission, period, and our attorney will tell you, we do not have jurisdiction over those financial questions.
I see.
We have no reasons to, we have no right to ask them.
You don't.
I mean, but, but I'm just pointing out that most of these that you're asking, I need to get you to wrap it up, 'cause we're a minute and a half over, uh, on, on your time.
I beg your pardon, but I, I will wrap it up. Absent, you respond to the questions before you act on this item. Regardless of your jurisdiction, deny the request. Uh, the written text of my public comment is submitted. The request of inclusion in the minutes of today's meeting, in compliance with MRS two-forty-one, the veteran meeting laws, called open full disclosure, of public pertinent information, and we'll see about what your jurisdiction is from now on. I guarantee that.
Mr. Chairman, you are-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your courtesy.
-beyond your jurisdictional boundaries, so.
I beg your pardon.
The financial aspects of this are beyond this commission's jurisdictional boundaries.
So far. Thank you very much for your opinion. I would indicate that a legal opinion is exactly that, not a court ruling.
Okay. Would you accept that and put it in the record? Thank you.
Thank you, Todd Farley, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. As much as I admire Tom, I think he's wrong on this. And you know something? There is a financial aspect to this, because the more we improve this area, the more attraction there is, and that is why, what have we got? Four apart, uh, we've got four skyrises going on, or highrises going on down there. I do not think that those highrises would, would have come in there had it not been for the Arts District. for the Arts District. And I mean, this, this city needs all the tax bases it can get, even if they have to forgive loans or ta, forgive some of the tax rates right up front. Eventually, once a building's built, it's there forever. And I just, I'm, I'm for this. I, I think that we need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this matter. I do own property in the Arts District. It's outside the notice area, but I do believe this park, if successful, will have a financial impact on that, so I will abstain.
Thank you. Anyone else? Or a motion? Commissioner Goyens?
Mr. Chairman, move to follow staff's recommendation on item forty-three, SDR two-three-nine-three-one, for approval subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Okay, I just have one, I apologize. I do have one quick question, and by this map that we're looking at and the gentleman that spoke about the truck, am I looking at this correct? It looks like the parking lot is over here, so he ain't going to be able to come up and turn left.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually was looking at that, and I, we can't tell without actually sitting down, doing some engineering and throwing some templates on that, knowing what kind of trucks are actually going to this facility to see if he can make the maneuver back onto Casino Center. I'd like to give him my business card and meet with him before the City Council, meaning if this goes to City Council.
So, so we would not be closing that area. It would just be one Wade at that point?
Right, so I'd like to sit down with him and take a closer look at that.
Okay, if you'll give your, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. We have a motion then for approval of item number forty-three. Please vote. Post. And motion carries.
And that will go forward to City Council on November seven.
And we're going to take about a ten-minute break, so the next applicant can prepare. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Tom.
This is a Timmy Brady's family, isn't it?
Yeah, once I get rolling, I'm on stage, you know that? Anthony Warnke, state senate candidate.
We're going to call the meeting back to order. As soon as we have enough people to do that. One, two, three, four. Oh, we can do that? Okay. Then, we'll move on to item number forty-four. TXT two-three-nine-eight-four, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. Discuss and possible action to amend Title six-point-four-zero and Title one-nine-point-oh-four to revise the special-use permit required for general business-related gaming uses.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this text amendment that you have before you this evening is to correct discrepancies between Title six, Title nineteen, and our current licensing practices. Currently, Title nineteen does not require a special-use permit for supper clubs or urban lounges to have a separate special-use permit for gaming, although Title six does. What this will do was, will cut out the duplicate application that you have. An example of this was the application that you just had earlier on the agenda, items number forty-one and forty-two, where they had to come in for two separate special-use permits. That will be eliminated down to one special-use permit, where they have gaming as an accessory use for the supper clubs and urban lounges. And that concludes our report to you.
Any, this is a.
This is a public hearing?
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none?
Commissioner.
Make a motion if we're ready.
Motion from the man.
Regards to item number forty-four, which is the text amendment, twenty-three-nine-eight-four, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Motion has been made for approval. Please pass your votes.
Post.
Motion passed.
That will go forward to council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Moving on to item forty-five, TXT two-three-nine-nine-one, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. Discussion and possible action to amend the Union Park Design Standards Manual. Also discuss and possible action to adopt the Union Park Streetscape Design Standards. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, despite the length of the documents that you received as backup for this item, the changes that are being proposed are relatively minor in nature. There is no change to the overall density or intensity of the uses on the Union Park site. Rather, this text amendment will correct certain issues relative to the design standards, refine some language relative to the LEED standards that are required in the project, adds two uses to the Union Park District, and also what we will be doing is adopting a separate Streetscape document, which will be included as an appendix to the design standards and gives very specific requirements for Streetscapes for all the streets in the Union Park development.
If I may very briefly, one correction. This is Ward five only, not all wards.
That is correct.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farley, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. When will this be heard in the, in the chambers of the.
City.
We don't have a date certain yet, but it will be published.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Will the district identified as Union Park in any way be used as an entertainment overlay district?
No, it will not.
No taverns, no food, beverage, entertainment?
Yes, it will be allowed to have supper clubs. It will be allowed to have taverns, but it will not be an entertainment district.
Not called entertainment, but will have separation distance requirements or not?
No. Going to be proposed by the text amendment that follows is that separation distance may be waived, and we'll discuss that with the next item on the agenda.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deny the item.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission.
Yes.
Commissioner Steinman?
What does LEED-certified or greater mean? Is it, is that the lowest level of LEED? It could be higher than that.
Yes, certified is the lowest level.
That is the lowest level. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion on TXT two-three-nine-nine-one, move for approval.
We have a motion for approval of item forty-five. Please vote. Post. Motion carries.
Again, that goes forward to council in ordinance form.
Item forty-six, TXT two-four-zero-zero-seven, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. Discussion and possible action to amend Title nineteen-point-oh-four to allow distant separation waivers for liquor establishments, tavern uses in the Parkway Center District. Staff?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the proposed text amendment before you would allow waivers from the separation distance requirements for taverns within the Parkway Center District. Currently, as drafted, the only place that taverns are allowed are within the Union Park property and not the rest of the Parkway Center. There are protected uses on the east side of the railroad tracks and on the west side of the freeway, but within the district itself, there are no protected uses, and so consequently, staff is proposing this amendment before you tonight.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. First, what is the content of the amendment that's proposed? What, what varies from the waivers, or are the waivers in place or what?
I, I think what it is, is currently there's a fifteen-hundred-foot separation, and that can be waived, so.
Well, it could weigh zero feet, right?
The way it's read, yes.
Okay. The second question, when was there an open public hearing and discussion meeting on any of the planned venues that will be in Union Park under this title?
If I may, Chairman?
Yes.
We have no applications at this time. This is a text amendment. When applications come forward, they will go through the public hearing process.
That was almost inaudible, but I think I caught some of it.
They will go through the public hearing process.
I, I could, I got the gist of it. Thank you very much. And I don't know where the public meetings were or will be. Almost, almost.
Yeah, this is the public hearing on the text amendment.
Understand.
But anybody going for these will come here for a hearing.
First before it goes down.
And waivers, yes.
Very good. I, I anticipate that with some fervor, because unless you have public input on a public pertinent issue, it won't be of any service really to the public. It'll be of special interest context, primarily perhaps only. That needs to be closely looked at. I say that to you because it is your responsibility at this juncture to be very aware of what those significant issues might be and how they might eventually come back around you. Don't think for one minute the council's going to say they recommended it. They're going to say you did, and you're going to say staff did. So we'll see where that leads. Thank you very much.
And the staff will blame you.
No, they can't blame me. I'm, I'm only, I'm only a member of the public. Nobody has less power than the public. Remember that, except for what it says in the Constitution. According to the Constitution, nobody has more power than the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Chairman, I just want to make a correction. That this is Ward five only, not all wards.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Steinman?
Make a motion. Motion on TXT two-four-zero-zero-seven, move for approval.